Maybe we can save them a lot of time sitting here.
Yeah, I mean you could.
Unless they keep their permit. All right. Wait just a minute here. Get our batteries in the recorder. All right, good morning, everyone. If you'd please stand with me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I see we have Pastor Lake here this morning. Would you mind blessing the meeting for us?
Lord, thank you for this beautiful morning. Thank you for all that you do for us on a daily basis. All the things that we forget to thank you for, Lord. Thank you for that. The gratitude with this time together, that you can give us wisdom and how to conduct business. Thank you for all that you do. You make me pray.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I welcome everybody this morning to the Hampshire County Commission meeting Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. And I welcome those online watching us as well. So I'll call the meeting to order and the first item is the minutes. Both commissioners, well, all three commissioners had a digital copy of those, so I would approve a motion to approve those or any corrections that we might need to look at.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that those minutes be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We will move right on to the president's report and the commissioner's report. My report's very short today. The one thing I'll mention, and I'm pretty sure Commissioner Cannon will probably touch on it, but I did sign the documents for the development authority for another 400-plus in grant funding to clean up more asbestos that they found at the old hospital. And so I did sign those papers last week for the development authority. And like I said, I'm sure Commissioner Cannon will touch on it more, but that's, as that's his board, but I just wanted to mention that. And I, and I wanted to say that that the development authority has worked night and day on that. And, you know, that's that, that's not what you hear out in the public, but, you know, that's, that's been, they've been handed one mess after another there. And, you know, Eileen calls her president of the board there at 5:00 in the morning. She calls me at 9:30 at night to make those, all that red tape paperwork work. And, you know, I just gotta defend them a little bit there because also as a commissioner, I'm, I'm out there and I hear the disappointment about things not going the way they should down there, but the development authority is gonna hand over to the school board a clean lot. And the, the MOU is, is that the school down here in the lot in exchange will be cleaned too. So I hope everybody remembers that when the school board goes through some of the same things that the development authorities went through. So I'll just leave it at that and I'll, I'll let Commissioner Cannon, when his report comes up, touch on that because he is a commissioner that goes to all those meetings. Bob?
How you doing?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, and getting back to that hospital, Brian, and I think David may know also, it's, it's four or five years ago when we, before we ever transferred the hospital to the developer, we went through the same darn thing with the, with the asbestos. And that tile and everything had already supposedly been taken care of. And, but they never found anything in the tile anyway, did they, this time?
Allegedly.
They, they did.
Well, conflicting opinions on that.
As a matter of fact, when, before the hospital was ever, we ever went up to the, to the new hospital, they, Valley Health had was supposed to have them go in there and clean all that asbestos up. And that didn't work either. But it is, and it falls back to the development authority and us, and it's, quite frankly, it shouldn't, but that's where, that's where it lands. My report on, I attended the Hampshire County Emergency Service Agency meeting where we discussed the hiring of an assistant. And I think they may have made a selection there as to who the, they was gonna offer the assistant, assistant job to, and also should be the, they'd be the assistant to the, to Mr. Malcolm on the Homeland Security. Attended the Central Hampshire PSD. The main thing we done there was, was transfer the, the wastewater sewer project, the wastewater project in Cape Bridge to the, the town of Cape Bridge. And now the town of Cape Bridge is gonna have the, the, the water in the sewer that was originally, the water was originally the, belonged to the development authority. So that, that was, that, that was a very good move on, on their part. Attended the foreign land protection meeting where there's really nothing significant there. We, we had one applicant withdrawal that had, we, we dealt with for a number of years, so they withdrew their application. And that way that releases some funding that we were holding in advance for them. Released funding for, for other, other applications. I, and then last night I attended the, the regional county commission meeting up at Petersburg where most of the county, all the counties sit and discuss the problems they're having within each county. That's Pendleton Grant, already a member on Hampshire. And so that was a, that was a good meeting we had last night discussing some of the problems that each, each of the counties. And some of them have similar problems as we have. So, other than that, and some phone calls, basically that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Commissioner Cannon?
Thank you. I attended the Hampshire County Committee on Aging meeting just to, Delegate Helen Brand and Thorne were there and they had ceremonial picture with their discretionary funding they chose to give to the, the kitchen project. So was pretty terrible having to break the news to those that didn't watch the commission meeting about the gouge that I was pretty publicly outraged about. But anyways, just, just a, a short briefing here, the, they took it with grace and, and honestly, to, to their credit, they said they all stand behind the commission completely. We're not gonna be strong-armed by a single bidder and we're not gonna, you know, stand by what they gouge the taxpayers. If we have to wait a little while to save tens of thousands of dollars, we'll do that. So they were disappointed, but I, I did brief them on the, the fact that we're moving forward. We did secure contractor for the outside project and fixing the water mitigation issue and, and informed them that Mr. Hart would be trying to secure other bids and then he was already working on that the, the day after we turned down the bid that we got. Senator Manson's office did finalize their approval on the $110,000 for congressional delegated spending. Big news, Julie Linger, our executive director is going to be retiring at the end of the year and Dana Hart, her deputy director will be stepping into her position. So good thing about Dana, she's been there a very long time and she sits in on all the meetings and so she'll be, you know, one of those hopefully seamless new executive directors where she's not blindsided with a job she doesn't know very well. But we're having all the decks and things replaced in Springfield. Our nurses received a dollar fifty an hour raise. We have right about $300,000 in relief funding that the only thing that can be spent for is, is retention and raises and things of that nature. So we chose to gave them, chose to give the nurses a dollar fifty an hour raise. We did receive an award, a hundred percent grade rating from Commissioner Warley on our nutrition program. And just to give you a little overview on the, the meals, last month we did approximately 2,500 meals for, for the month. So 180-ish, 185 meals a day. And that's comprised of grab and go, congregant meals where they come and sit down, home-delivered meals, meals on wheels, and then frozen shelf-stable meals that seniors come in and pick up. Also attended the South Branch Valley Day Report Criminal Justice Board meeting. Delegate Thorne's been sitting in on those meetings. The, the, the big report there is just the job that Darren Taylor's done with growing the referral base. Just in DHHR alone, which was a non-existent referral program. We, we have an 1,100% increase in referrals from them. Our Romney office is, is completely renovated and I'm kinda rubbing off on Darren with my frugal attitude towards greedy contractors. So he actually put on his, his jeans and, and did a lot of the work himself and saved us about $10,000. So we do have our new website up and, up and running. That's doing great. We did change our meeting times to accommodate the judges and prosecutor. The, but the, the last big development was we're gonna implement a BIPs program, a Batter's Intervention Program for domestic violence individuals, if you will, which, which, which is highly sought after. Our, our judges and prosecutor really advocated for that program and so expanding in a bunch of different directions and also anger management will, will be a program that we're gonna consider implementing. But the BIPs classes, I think will be a good addition to the criminal justice board. I'm not gonna get into all the finances. You gentlemen know that we're doing pretty well and Darren did brief me, Mr. Clerk, that we would be, we hope to be have the commission paid back by the end of fiscal year. I'm sure he probably told you that, so I've been, I've been hawing him about it. So with the expansion of the programs and stuff, we're being fiscally responsible. Things are starting to really turn around and it's, it's a good program. Also attended the PBTA transportation meeting. I'm told that it's, it's, we're, we're nearly a shoe-in for the, the, the development grant and I, and I believe I briefed the commission on the, us changing our CDs to Edward Jones and things of that nature. Nothing major to report with PBTA, just monthly business. Yeah. I did have a conversation, I believe it was the lieutenant captain at the Slainsville Fire Company was just asking for guidance or help or, and, and I guided them to the Chapter 7 Code. A few gentlemen, Bob, you probably know by heart, but 7-1-3-C. So just a few gentlemen would look at that and maybe be expecting Slainsville Fire Company to come in for us to give them permission, if you will, or, I believe I said certification last time. It's not the correct wording, but for them to charge for their fire services. I know that Romney Fire is doing it. And for those of you that don't know what I'm talking about, I'll just give you a brief excerpt here. "Any county commission may authorize volunteer fire companies or paid fire departments to charge reasonable reimbursement fees for personnel and equipment used in performing firefighting services, victim rescue, or cleanup of debris or hazardous materials by the department personnel. The rate for such fees to be charged to property owners or other persons responsible for the liable for the payment for such services must be approved by the county commission and must be reasonable provided that no fee for any single incident or accident shall exceed $1,500." Bob, you knew about that one, didn't you?
Yeah.
Gentlemen, have you comment on that?
We've done that. Some of the companies didn't want to do it and it's been, David, it's been four or five years ago that I'm not sure that we went and, and moved it all up and could do it if they so desired. I think we have to check them, but I, I do know that we have that, we have that authority and I think Romney does charge for various things, not everything, but some stuff.
Just has to be an itemized bill and?
It was in my mind as well that it was done by the fire association and it was kind of a blanket approval. We'd have to check the minutes and see.
Okay.
The fire association came and Romney was the only one with time.
Okay, okay. So yeah, if it was a blanket approval, they, they were oblivious. They didn't know that the, that they had that.
And I'm not sure it was.
Yeah, we'll have to check.
I'm not, we'll have to check that. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that.
Their next meeting, I believe, is the first Monday of July. So I'll, hopefully we can get them some information. But anyways, most of my other, most, the rest of my business is in the agenda here, but oh, I did, I had the criminal justice board the same day as this highway brief, so gracefully Keith McIntosh volunteered to go in my stead and then he made me a whole packet. And also Delegate Thorne went and he briefed me a little bit, but just quick numbers, gentlemen, and I, and I can give you this packet. I've got copies. But the lawmakers really stepped up this year and threw a lot of money at Division of Transportation and Highways, which is, which is something we drastically need. We're gonna be business-friendly and all the above, see our taxpayer dollars used with discretion. $13.3 million total planned for Hampshire County planned projects and it gives me, you know, us a, commission a full list and map of each project, et cetera. And then real quickly here, over 700 miles of road now in Hampshire County, and that's just adopted roads. So we're well over 800 with private, et cetera. And we have approximately 490 miles of road paved in blacktop. So we're, we're definitely getting there. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cannon.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
May? I, I was gonna leave the hospital alone. This is pretty hard on them last meeting, but yeah, you, you are right, Commissioner Agniesz. It's just, we're gonna have well, well, a near a million dollars in tearing down a hospital and it's just coming from the private sector, tearing down buildings and doing this for a living. It's, it's absolutely insane. It would take us a year and a half to tear down a building, but we are doing everything we possibly can. And this is a compliment. I mean Patricia Scarsa from, you know, Woody Thrasher ought to be very proud of the employee he has there and the job that she does. But, but her being good at her job seems to be hard on our constituents and taxpayers. When she's good at her job roping us into change orders, it ends up costing us a lot of money. But yeah, I, I do realize that this, this, the school building authority has been very upset and this is hearsay from Mr. Morgan and the board and Jeff. They're really putting a lot of pressure on the board. You would think, being that a lot of these funding agencies are intergovernmental, that they would be apprised of the situation and what we have going on and what it takes to tear down a building like that and them giving no leeway is, is, is a little tough. I'm, I see both sides of the, the, the argument. But I think whenever they go to tear down the elementary school, they're gonna get a heavy dose of what we're dealing with and may start to see our side of the, the equation and that. But it's very, very, very frustrating, so I share that sentiment. But we're doing everything we possibly can. But to end development authority with some really good news. The Aquabank CEO had a very, very nice event in Summit Point. The commissioners were invited and Lieutenant Governor was there, the Congress, congressmen, our senators and delegates. And I've kinda kept this under wraps because that's one thing I've really learned is, you know, not count your chickens before the hens in this job. So the briefings that I received on the amount of jobs that we create, I've kinda kept very modest until I heard what the CEO had to say. And, and to see if they were gonna exercise their right in buying Lot 6 in the tech park. So they, they have exercised their right to buy Lot 6. And from the CEO and president himself is, they're projecting 150 jobs from the shrimp farm in Cape and Bridge. So originally we heard Phase 1, 30 to 50, Phase 2, 50 to 80. Phase 3 wasn't necessarily a thing, so I didn't wanna count my chickens on that, but so that, that's amazing. And like Delegate Thorne said, you know, maybe for Berkeley County and some of these other counties, that's not a lot of jobs, but for Hampshire County, that's, that's huge and it's a, it's gonna be a $30 million investment. So awesome news for the development authority to go along with that not so great news. Commissioners?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cannon. We will move right along to stay on time as well as we can. May delinquent tax list for approval. Clerk Straight?
These are the real estate and personal property tax delinquencies as, as of May. These are the ones that have been advertised and real estate option by the auditor's office.
Didn't, is this what Norma brought you over? Or where, where did she bring you? About the maps? We got them? Yeah, okay. Can we, okay. Yeah, okay. I just wanna make sure. Mr. President, I move that we approve the, the May delinquent tax list that was presented by the sheriff.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the May delinquent tax list presented to the clerk in commission by the sheriff be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Just you sign.
And this will be in my office for review at any time.
Thanks.
Gentlemen?
All right, next on the agenda, we have Mr. Larry C. from Parks and Recreation in regards to the South Branch Bluegrass Festival. Thank you, sir. You're doing better. You're doing a lot better.
Good morning, gentlemen. Greetings from Hampshire County Parks and Recreation. A couple of updates. The work on the HVAC system down at Old Cape and Bridge Middle School, which you all approved through the COVID funds, is completed. They finished it yesterday, or they finished it last week. We did have a few leaks yesterday that they're coming back to fix, but we really appreciate you allocating that money. We, there's no way we could have done that without, without your help. So that is all taken care of and we should be in good shape with our heating and air conditioning down there. On the 24th, we are having our 14th Annual South Branch Valley Bluegrass Festival at Wapakama Campground. They tell me that's a lineup of the most famous bluegrass people in the country. I couldn't tell you whether that's true or not, but there it is. Comes from the horse's mouth over there. So but what we've always done in the past, we have used the maintenance crew for half a day on Thursday, the 23rd, and all day on Friday, the 24th. And we're asking if you all would be gracious enough to allow us to use the maintenance crew to get ready for the festival again this year.
I would move that we authorize Parks and Rec to utilize the maintenance, county maintenance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission allow the use of the county maintenance department in help with the bluegrass festival. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for all you do for Hampshire County Parks and Recreation. We couldn't do it without the money that you give us, that's for sure.
Thank you. All right, now we're a couple of minutes ahead of schedule. Clerk, do you have any quick maintenance items we can address?
Yeah. Well, a lot of signatures there. And you guys approved a blanket approval for the opioid settlements. This one is from the Chaffin Law Firm in regard to defendant Neil Pharmaceuticals. It's just a good time to get you to sign it. So bring that up. I don't think we need to do any specific action because you have, you have already approved the signature of these as they come in. And then I had a, a maintenance matter. There was an accident over the weekend, summer weekend back, and one of the handrails out here was bent significantly. Somebody hopped up on the sidewalk and bent it. Maintenance crew, being the resourceful fellows they are, straightened it up. It's not very telling. But we do not have a handrail from the sidewalk in front of the old jail building down to the street. And this seemed like a good time to look into replacing these here. They're, you'll see them, they're, they're steel pipes with caps on the end. They're not, you know, really, they look like kind of homemade. They're durable. Obviously you can bend them and straighten them. But I asked Kenny to check into it. He went to Hampshire Metals and they got a, a estimate of, or quote of $2,980.76 to fabricate and replace the handrails and the two sets of handrails and install the third one here on Route 28 going north. So I just wanna present that to you. I'd like to, like to get that approved, if we could.
I move that we approve every question.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission allow the clerk to address the maintenance issue of new handrail, replacing existing and a third new handrail. All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passed. All right, we will move on to the Hampshire County Historic Landmarks Commission in reference to bylaw revisions. Morning, ladies.
Morning. Top copy is just to show you that I had to blow it up because it's just too small for me to deal with.
It was this small.
So those are the bylaws, but I also found there were mentions in the ordinance.
The red would be additions. I don't have the old the old ones.
This is current.
Yeah, but the red is what you want to strike or what you want to amend?
And I want to replace with
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And these are just finding two more places where the Hampshire County Planning Commission was mentioned in the rules of procedure and ordinance. So I'm not sure whether we have to rest the issue of time or not.
Does this have to be approved today? I'd like I'd like an opportunity just to read over.
Yeah, I think that, you know, if you look at it today and then come back and approve, as long as you do it before the 1st of July. So we're legal the 1st of July is the big thing. So, yeah.
I move that we do that, guys, because I'd like just to go over it. Because I can't, I don't remember everything about it. And I don't know what
Could you, in short, just give us a briefing? I know I agree with Commissioner Haught, we ought to
Well, we have
Strike the minutes.
And and the other thing is, and it may be my fault, maybe if I'd have been to the meeting, I would have knew. And but I wasn't at the meeting and so
We also have a need to give you a proposed budget that you would approve for us because that needs to be done by the 1st of July. So we have come up with something that we think is feasible. You know, having been the first year we've ever had a budget, we may have to come back for revision later on. But, you know, if we run into something that we're not aware of happening.
Is the budget
I haven't seen one. Yes. No, there it is. Okay, last page.
We have kept it at a minimum because we're not sure what we're facing with with this new survey that we're doing.
It's very fair and conservative.
Well, we're trying to be conservative because, you know.
In my one opinion. But but briefly, could you could you just give me a long and short? You want to strike the the responsibility to give the minutes to planning, but not West Virginian Division of Culture?
Oh, true, we have to give that to the Division
Good, okay. And then the other one was there's two excerpts that you're amending. Right.
Because they all say the Planning Commission in them.
Yes.
We will have to be changing that. So did the green redo of the bylaws that instead of placing our minutes and other documents, the Planning Commission, we put them in a space that might be available in the courthouse. Eric showed us a number of options in the basement.
Interesting tour down there.
Yes, yes. It is.
We're eager to find a different location and we would accept a free day if needed.
Well, I am I am also planning to talk with the deaf and blind school because I know they have some space up there that they're not using. Possibility that we can talk them into allowing us some space to store things. But, you know, with the end of the school, I have not tried to bother him with that because knowing what the end of the school entails, he's busy right now.
Yeah, I mean personally, I think we ought to keep it on county property. But that's just my one opinion. But I think we could clean up one of the rooms downstairs, and I think we've mitigated the moisture issues. We got a grant for that many years ago, didn't we? Those two rooms down there are moisture controlled or
Those are vaults.
Vaults, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we want to keep it on county property. We don't want to do a more logo.
And the fact that if somebody in the public doesn't have internet access and can't or wants to see some of the documents that are not updated in in minutes online, that they could contact the the name of the chairperson, which will be on our website, the county website, to make arrangements to come in and see them. So that would be a public access during courthouse hours. That would probably be better to have it at the courthouse.
Yes.
Okay.
If, as far as I can see, the budget looks the budget looks fine. And I agree that if you if you would need any revisions to it, we could we could address that. But if this time I'll go ahead and move that we approve their their budget for the July 2023 to to end of June 2024.
I'll second with one comment. The money that that they're asked for in their budget, we're going to take that from planning's budget, put it into their budget, correct?
That's what, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, I'll second.
If I recall, the Planning Commission said that they had $5,000 designated for that. And they so that'll be, yeah, we can, sure.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the budget proposed from the Hampshire County Historic Landmarks Commission be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I certainly want to thank you guys for bearing with us because this has been quite a quite a mission to accomplish. And Carol has spent hours and hours on the phone with the state and on the computer, transcribing, changing all these things. And we're looking forward to the 1st of July and good things happening. We have sent out letters for bids for the survey for the
Excellent. This is a, in my opinion, a testament to what can happen with a board with just a few good appointments. Little revitalization and energy and new ideas and, yeah. Thank you, guys.
And Mr. President, this time I want to make an appointment to the board, to the Historic Landmark Commission Board. Brenda Hyatt has has decided that she no longer wants to to serve, and her term is up June 30th. And I'd like to appoint Robert A. Smith of Augusta to replace, to take Brenda Hyatt's position, which would start July 1 of this year.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the soon to be open vacancy on the Hampshire County Historic Landmarks Commission be replaced with Mr. Robert Smith of Augusta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I'd also like to thank Brenda Hyatt for the 18 years that she has given us on the county commission. And we're looking forward to Mr. Smith because he has a lot of information about the Augusta area that will be beneficial to us, so.
Good.
Yes.
And we'll just make notes, clerk, for the agenda for the 27th, that the that'll give us that two weeks to look over the proposed bylaws.
And if you need anything else, yes.
And that that date will be okay with you ladies to return?
Yes. The 6 o'clock?
Yeah, be our next meeting, and that'll get you before July 1.
Thank you, ladies. Mr. President, beings that it's on the agenda, reckon we ought to table motion or? There was no motion made to to move it, move the beings that Historic Landmarks is on there, the bylaw revisions specifically. We didn't really move or take action on it.
Yes, if you if you want to want to formally table that, we can.
I move that we formally table the bylaw revisions until next meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the bylaw revisions for the historic or Hampshire County Historic Landmarks Commission be tabled to the 2nd June meeting, which would be the 27th at 6 o'clock, I believe. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
I don't know if you had to do that or not, Brian.
We probably should. All right, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. You got anything there, clerk, that we can address quickly?
Fairly quickly. Commissioner Cannon was talking about the South Branch Valley Day Report Center and what they're doing. Remember approving grant applications for $190,000 for formal operating budgets. We have gotten notice from the government of the state of West Virginia that that's been approved. So we have the grant contract and all the administration papers where your signature here.
You gentlemen need to see this.
I don't need to see it. I will make, I'll move that we authorize the president to sign the the grant contract between the Division Administrative Services of the Justice and Community Services Section and the Hampshire County Commission.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that the commission allow the president to sign for the grant contract agreement between Division of Administrative Services, Justice and Community Services Section, Hampshire County Commission. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. I didn't see a sticker. Was there doing this one?
Eric signs theirs. He would just sign, wait for those five.
Okay.
This one ain't give $190,000.
Mm-hmm.
Here's your folder back.
Did you grab up my agenda there, clerk? I think you got to have that.
We do have
Sorry about that.
Do you want to use another minute? We've got the the certification of the tax books for the assessor. Each of you sign those and reiterate. Go with the back of the books, it's just a
Yeah, we can go ahead and do that.
This is part of what you get coming out of Board of Review and Equalization. And, okay. So you see where the stickers are? President, each commissioner will sign at each of their pages. Ones for there be a real estate book and a personal property book.
So these are, this is the results of the Board of Review and Equalization?
Correct. And that's that's going to be the basis of the taxation of the county properties.
Mr. President, I move that we sign the certify the land book certification that was presented by the assessor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the commission certify the land book documents presented by the assessor.
Of the land book and personal property.
Land book and personal property, corrected. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
You want to sign? We all three have to sign, so it don't matter. I mean, whether these, is it marked?
President's on there first, and any any others inside.
You may, you may want to change some of these. Or I want you, you're the one who wrote it. But I see that they say if the chairman's not there, anybody else can run the meeting, shouldn't it be the vice chair? And then they said that the minutes ought to be reported within a reasonable amount of time. That's pretty loose.
Yeah, that's why I want to go with this. I mean, I just want to just make some changes, and you do too. You go and see what changes you can make.
Why are you
Me, I go with this and I have the vice chair, that's what you
I would say it's your
And then if they're not there, then usually it's Tracy or somebody does it. Then you have to worry about
You see where they they elect a chair, but then what is the, then this says everybody else is appointed. Shouldn't they all be elected? Well, there's not very many of them.
I'll think of it. Yeah, you're probably right. Most everything else we do is elected.
Yeah, they'll leave you a whole lot of room there, Bob. Squeeze it in there in the middle.
Well, I can just sign right under David.
Hey, Greg.
Okay, I see.
Good, good.
Yeah, I can, that's a, I can see that.
Did you get a call from Mrs. Judy? Judith Judy? Alright. Lucky you, huh? Just kidding. She cracks me up. I guess they had a big issue down at the tax office at Gaten Bridge. I didn't, I just seen that there. If she knew about it or not.
Okay, now we will move on to Hampshire County Community Events Center Committee in regards to a funding request.
Morning, commissioners. How we doing?
Morning. Good. Mr. Flanagan, Ms. Kidner?
How are you guys?
Want to start?
Nope, go right ahead.
Well.
Get a chair or if you want to, you want to stand up?
Oh, I'm alright.
As you guys know, we're trying to build a community event center at Fairgrounds. The barns there are in need of replacing and modernizing, modernizing. And they're just, we've outgrown them, basically is what we're, what we're at. We are, our capacity this year, how many kids we have? 169?
169.
Yeah. We have 169 animals we get to fair this year. So everything's getting tight. It's like we've been putting Band-Aids on things for years. We've just never, we just make it, make it happen throughout the year and that's about it. What we would like to propose is we would like to do a, a bigger barn. We'd like to come in and tear down the barns that started the, the back of the arena and level all that out. Take down the barns, level all that out. I've had Kirk Wilson from, I think he's from this part of the upper track. He came down, he did us a site survey. Everything looked out, worked out pretty good. We were, we think we can get the dirt from across the area over to move in. So what we're looking at is we're probably pushing a million dollars is what we're going to need to, to do the facility. I've got some, I did get a quote on a facility that is 60 by 200, 16 tall. So it would basically be a post-frame style building. It's 60 by 200 and it has a 16-foot lean-to on the whole back of it. So it's really a 76 by 200 is what we're, what we're up against. It would have, it's closed metal sides, a 412 roof pitch, trusses are four foot on center. The three, they have a 312 pitch on, on the back. They have two-foot overhangs all the way around. Three 20 by 14-foot garage doors with openers in them. Five-inch concrete slab all the way through with reinforcement wire and six-inch seamless gutters. So what this quote would include, and this has been, this is 10-1 of 2022, so it's almost a year old. We're looking at just under $400,000 for that. Now, that did not, that didn't include the concrete. Didn't include any of the wiring, any of the finished part that we'd like for the bathrooms and the kitchen. So that's why we're pushing that million-dollar mark is what we're, what the money we're trying to raise, so.
But what we're here asking for your assistance for today is for this American Recovery Plan is for the money to start this process and helping us hire a grant writer in order to access those grants. We feel that once we get in the door and we can get our foot, a foothold on some money to start this process, that we can acquire enough grants to move this forward. As you guys know, and you have kids there, we'll have kids there. Our ag program is suffering a little while bit, especially in the high schools. We all know how important ag is to everyone. But not only the ag is not what we're focusing on, but what we can do with this building once it's built, being in a central location. You just saw it, somebody needs place to store items, make that available for 911. If there would be a disaster, we want to make these buildings and take this building to an upgrade to where if there's a disaster, not only for animals, but for also people, be able to host numerous things. I should ask first, did everybody have a copy of this? Was this given to you prior?
We had digital copy, but if you have an extra copy.
You know, I thought you guys today were just going to ask for a, for a, for funding for a survey.
Right, we are.
And because, because you're talking about tearing down buildings and stuff, but you know that the Augusta Rootin would have to approve all that.
Yes, yeah. We're, we're well aware of all that.
Pumpkin works with us very closely. He's actually on our board.
Then, and I've seen your, your funding request. I think the $25,000 I'd have trouble with because we're, we're going to have a grant writer of our own. So I can't see hiring somebody to do the grant writing when we're going to have a, the county's got a grant writer. And then you, the, the survey, I'm assuming, will determine whether you put the building there or you could put it over on the other 17 acres.
Right.
I mean, it's just not going to be, I mean, it could be feasible that you wouldn't have to tear down the existing buildings or you may have to.
It could be.
But the survey is, that's, that's what it, because I always wanted to have a building over on the other side anyway. I did, but it didn't, it never materialized. But of course, we worry about moving people back and forth from the, from the rides and the.
Yeah. Trying to keep everything in one location versus a little further away is.
But then, then we have, we have a lot of, we have a lot of parking problems and crowd problems.
Yep, yep.
So I, I mean, I'd be for the survey, I mean, as far as that goes. I'm not for the, paying a grant writer. I mean, I think we have, we should have a grant writer.
Well, this is all a learning process for us, so especially when it comes into the grant situation.
I wanted to make sure to, have you guys got your 501(c)(3) or (4)?
501(c)(3) is in the process right now.
It's in the process, but it's never, hadn't been approved yet, right?
No, we just now got that because.
And then, did, have you got a West Virginia business license?
We do not. I don't understand, we won't be.
Yeah, you have to.
Still not to have a business license.
Yeah, because I, when I done my son's scholarship, I'd done a 501(c)(3). And there's different ones you can do.
Okay.
Depends on whether I donate, maybe I could, I could claim it all. And sometimes you only get to claim a half of it. There's different 501(c)(3).
Okay.
But can you tell why a business license? Why do they require a business license for a non-property?
You're going to be doing business. And I had to, you, you have to renew it every year.
Okay.
And I think it's 25 bucks.
Okay.
That's all, it's just a simple.
Yeah, yeah, just apply. It's no big deal.
Okay, alright.
So Leah, do you, you want to go ahead with your, the rest of your proposal presentation there?
Sure. Just some of our key points. Like I said, the, the function will serve as an emergency shelter. Therefore, that's why we're looking into grant writing with 911. Funds are primarily required for a feasibility study and engineering plans to apply for larger grants. And that's where we're, we're sort of short on that is writing the grants. We've also had people offer to help us, but none of us has ever, and we're all volunteers, of course, you know, trying to start this and do this, you know, for numerous reasons. But not only will this, like I said, be agriculture and just for a barn, we hope to bring this as an event center and bring more things to our county. But in, in asking for this and proposals to get this grant writing and get it up off the ground, it'll also give us that foothold to go ahead and move forward. But right now, we've had three events and our total in our account right now is little under $6,000. So we can't even start yet by hiring people to give us what we need to get to the next process without grants and getting, you know, getting that step up. So that's what we're asking for your guys' help with, with this today. Is just sort of helping us get that. And then we'll go to it from there and do everything that we can and acquire our, you know, our business license. Like I said, our 501(c)(3) is in the process. Don't see Travis Delaplane's been helping me with all that. So he's applied for them before. He's been very helpful with us and keeping us on track with everything. Because like I said, we're all through this. I just stepped up because in the 24 years of doing the fair and working out there, I've just seen, you know, the need for that. You know, like this year, we've got more pigs than we've got pens. So we're working this year to try to figure out where it adds more pigs to. But the need is there. And I just feel like if, once this is met, that it can be so much more than just a one week of, you know, one week use. And things, fairgrounds can be used more and totally year-round.
Yeah, and that's, and, and the Rootin wants, we want to use that fairgrounds all the time.
Yeah, I run everything by Pumpkin and.
Matter of fact, we just give the grounds committee, they're doing the old, the old kitchen and they put a new floor in. And that's, they put some things in there for emergency or catastrophic events. I mean, they're, they're going to. But, but I'm, I mean, I, Mr. President, I support the, doing the survey. I have no trouble with that. I just, I just, I would like for us to use our own grant writer. When, of course, we haven't hired one yet. But I think that's, that's what we ought to do.
Well, I think that would be great.
I think that would be great. I mean, just when I've just read upon and all with the power grant proposal and implementing, you know, this funding and, and the grant writing, this person outside of our county one, that's the person who, I mean, they're more familiar with going after this type of thing. That, that's my only, I mean, not saying, like you said, you don't know who you're hiring or whatever. But, you know, by hiring.
Well, and, and that would be true in anything we do.
Right.
There might be somebody in a development authority that knows how to write grants. So, but if we're going to do a grant writer, I think that's who we should use, in my opinion.
Did y'all have any ideas or research on a grant writer? Have y'all been in contact or researched with?
No, we talked to Erin. We talked to Erin and then she said she was leaving, so that's where we've been. Like I said, I've had people, we can say, we can help you, you know, read through this and we can try to do it. But we all know grants are very precise. And so we want to make sure that they're done, they're done right. And we will abide by all, you know, nothing will come out of that account that is not, you know, that count is a closed account to just for the funding for this building.
I think we can save, save you guys the, the money and ourselves the money. We're going to have a full-time grant writer eventually.
Yeah.
So I agree, Commissioner Hott. But Commissioner Hott, I mean, I know that the fairgrounds is county commission property leased to the Rootin for six, so wouldn't the final save be our save?
No, it's theirs. Have you read the leases?
I didn't, that's why I was asking.
There's two leases, you can get them from the clerk. There's two of them for the two different, there's 17 acres, approximately 17 acres in each one. And the leases were done in 1974. And, and the reason Augusta Rootin needed it to the county commission is so they could start to get federal funding.
Gotcha, okay.
Then, and then, but in, in the, do you have a copy of the lease?
I don't have with me, but yes, I have.
Yeah, you ought to look at it because it's, it's very specific that they can, they can tear down a building. They can, they don't have to ask us anything. It's there, when they done that, it's, it's really there still there.
Okay.
Unless they go one.
Don't do anything unless we go to them. I mean, we don't, and we've, like I said, Pumpkin.
That's, and, and that's just the way it was wrote up. I mean, it's been, it's been.
Come across that question a lot. Like, doesn't the commission already own it?
Yeah, thanks for clarifying. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, we work closely with them, you know, get permission to fix or tear down.
Maybe that's what's out, but it's out.
I, I think it's a great project. I think it's a great idea. And, you know, it's, it's a move in the right direction for our county. It's a good investment in our youth and beyond. And I, I do think I agree with the other two commissioners. I think we can help you out on the grant writer. We had, we had an excellent grant writer. She still helps us some. And we have to hire a new one. But over the past six or seven years, I feel we've become pretty good at that. You can tell by how much money we've snagged out there. And, and, you know, ultimately, that federal money is all of our money. And we decided a few years ago we were going to go after it. We don't take it all the time because sometimes there's strings attached that we don't like. But, yeah, I want to help you guys. But I, I would, I would approve a, approve an amount minus the grant writer proposed amount. So what, whatever that would.
Problem, spending things to them and getting that help correct.
What's that?
Problem when that person's hired to get him to help us? Do we just need to talk to them?
Yeah, if there is a problem, I think he should come to us. I mean, you're going to have.
Because they, they work directly under the commission, so. That'll be part of their, part of their job right off the bat would be to help you guys.
Okay, that would be great.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
20,000 is the feasibility study.
Right.
I would move that we approve that amount.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the amount of $20,000 to the Community Events Center Committee for the survey and, and what did you call it, Commissioner?
Feasibility.
Feasibility study. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
We will get right on that business.
If you hear of any grant writers or.
Anybody looking for a job?
We will. Recommend or.
Do you want to medal? Do you want to medal yet?
Yes, we hear Friday or Monday. They didn't, which one?
This Friday?
Yeah.
You'll call me?
Yep. Will be.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next we have Prosecutor Rebecca Miller, and she's here on Personnel Matters and Revisions.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
I had sent a letter on June 1st. At the last commission meeting, I advised you that I had an opening for our staff. Ms. Shoemaker and her short of time at my office has proved to be valuable. Her and Ms. Lucas have maintained everything and much better working condition and have it processing and more. Shortly after I had hired Ms. Shoemaker, I had an attorney that mentioned that he was interested in the position. I've since spoke to him. He is interested in the position. During the last budget, my budget was approved as I had requested. The only issue was is that the commissioners had approved $2,080 per employee across the board. And given that my budget was sufficient because I had that, whether I could hire an assistant prosecuting attorney or a legal secretary, no additional money was added to my budget. So I'm requesting an additional amount of the $926 to cover that. And I would ask that permission to transfer $2,000 from my budget line item of computer software to salary and wages. That will give me the amount that I can advertise. I'll still have to advertise for an assistant prosecutor. But if I can get that amount in my budget, he has assured me that he is very much interested in the assistant prosecuting attorney position.
You said 900. It's 9, it's 9,000 here.
I'm sorry, 9,000, sorry. I apologize if I misquoted. 9,026, which would get me back up to where I need to be. Commissioners, I had, had a hard time finding assistant prosecutor. I think that's an issue across the state. I see several emails where those positions are needed. This would allow me an opportunity to be more involved than I can be in some of the matters, county matters. I, I try to get to them as quickly as I can, but my court load, given a magistrate court and circuit court oftentimes overrides my ability to get, to get to meetings and to, to respond to emails that I need to do. And I do it as fast as I can, but this third position would be, would be needed in our county.
I, I talked to the girls downstairs and they, they feel, of course, the 2,000, that's, that's no problem as far as transferring. But they, they feel that there's sufficient funding in there for this. And I'm not opposed to it. I just, I'm just wondering if, if maybe you guys could work that out to where, because.
If, if it looks like it's going to be short, we can always come back.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it, but it, but it is because the, the amount that I need for an assistant prosecutor was taken from that. Like, I won't have enough money to hire an assistant prosecutor.
If, if, as far as I'm concerned, I would, I would move that we, that we go ahead and, and do the budget revision with the, with the 2,000. And then you, you check with, with the, with the girls downstairs. Because those girls have been doing, they've been doing a good job. And I would like for you to, I'd like for you to, to check with them. And then if, if it's, if the case is that it's not there, then we could, then we could approve the 9,000.
So you're, you're saying that you gave a raise and then the $1 an hour was allowed by the commission? And when that starts to come out July 1st, you will then be short of what you're offering your assistant, your, your potential assistant?
Yes. So I have spoke to the girls downstairs, but the amount that I have set aside for an assistant prosecuting attorney was 70,000. I don't have that in my budget. This, this amount that I'm requesting in the revisions would make me to be 70,000. Because 20, $2,080 times four would be what I would need, plus a little bit more, but I can. need, plus a little bit more, but I can, the remaining amount, I could get from my budget, or I can move around, I think it was seven hundred and some dollars that I added up, but I do not have enough to hire an assistant prosecutor with the current budget line item, it was, I had requested two, two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars, that's what was approved, with that, I would not have enough, given the salary of the, the raise of Mr. Johnson and Ms. Lucas back earlier this year that I had requested, and it had been approved, and then the salary of Ms. Schumaker, I simply do not have it, I would still be short.
We could go ahead and approve that amount, gentlemen, and it, and as many of our departments do, come next year, they could, if, if it wasn't over, overestimated amount, we, she could always give that back, am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you, but I will say that as busy as prosecutor is, she tries to attend a lot of our development authority events, and that was kind of, if I'm just going to be blunt, that's what I threw at her, I said, "So, you're telling me if, if, you know, if we, if we can get you an assistant, we can get rid of Hoy."
Get rid of what?
Get rid of Hoy Singleton.
Oh.
And I'm not putting that pressure on the prosecutor right now, but she, as she did, and I only brought that up because she mentioned that she could be more involved in county, other extracurriculars, so I do definitely see that as a benefit, because there's several things, just like the Julia Miller thing, that, you know, that-
But I'm fine with it, I mean, as far as, I just wanted to, the girls told me that there was, there's, there's enough there, and she told, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, you know.
And I think that there's enough if there was a legal secretary, if I was to go back and do three legal support staffs-
I can't see your face, so, so, don't do it, you get a few extra-
No, 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 I'm just saying that, you know, I looked at this and thought, you know, through this, but I don't have the time to research a lot of matters that you guys ask me, and I want to research, I want to learn different areas of the county and the law, and, but, you know, right now, Mr. Johnson and I are strictly focused to the criminal law in this county, because it is overwhelming.
And, and I understand that, and I'm sure they do too, and we've, I mean, there's been times we've hired other, other attorneys to do stuff for the prosecutor, so that's not, the, the money personally, that's not a question.
I understand.
I mean, if, if that's what it, if, if we want to do, I just wanted to make sure that if, if it's not in the budget, then I think we can, we can put it in the budget.
Yeah, because what Commissioner Haught's trying to say, I believe, is, is what I've seen a lot of, let me, let me preface with the, what I think, we see, and I, I've seen a lot of individuals coming on budget for, for raises in their budget, and they, they don't spend all the money that they have, you know, that's not what you're doing, is what you're doing.
No, no, in order for me to be in compliance with the commission and to give my letter by June thirtieth, these amounts would need to be transferred into the salary amount, so I can be in compliance with having the salary of what I'm requesting and the salary of what I have, that's what I'm saying.
I move we authorize the request of the prosecutor as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the request for the budget revision to allow for the assistant prosecutor process of hiring be granted, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioners.
That includes the in-house transfer as well, so, it covers everything.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
She have enough office space? She said she did, but, well, that's her problem.
We've gone a long way, when I started, we had, we had part-time-
Part-time.
Steve was part-time, and then we got to-
Clerk, do I have anything real quick, I don't see the development authority here yet, and they're on the, on the agenda.
You have a call from the assessor, that's pretty quick.
We'll try to call someone up.
Who was she, who was Eileen coming in for?
Brownfield's thing, but apparently that's already taken care of.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Yeah, then you already signed that?
Yes, sir.
I, I did, I did, is that what that was, it, it didn't specify there, and I know, I just wanted to make sure.
It has to be that, but she called you at five o'clock in the morning, you did it, I believe.
No, no, she called me nine thirty, she called Greg at five thirty.
But that, that's what, that's that additional four hundred thousand dollars of funding, of which I should mention Thrasher's getting fifty-five thousand dollars of, so, for the record. And they're allocating themselves seventy days, and that, now, they, they, they believe it's not going to take that, but I don't believe anything now till I see it with that hospital, so, yeah, Woody Thrasher ought to have ten more, Patricia's, she's good at what she does. But I'll send her an email, Commissioner.
You want me to call her, Brian?
No, that's okay, I, I just didn't know whether it was something additional, or-
Yeah. It's definitely a compliment to her, but, because Eileen struck her down with the DEP being the superior decision-maker, and she just diplomatically stayed silent, and then as soon as that meeting was over, found her little route to the taxpayers' money.
Commissioner Haught, did you see this exoneration list?
Yes, I did.
Mr. President, I'd move that the commission approved the exoneration commission list as presented by the tax assessor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded the exoneration list, since our last meeting, that was presented by the tax assessor, being approved as presented, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
We're still-
Yeah, we can address a couple more items, because we're, now we're ahead of schedule, way ahead.
We have the annual pro application, which the Board of Education prepares, the MOU to that was delivered yesterday, and requires president's signature as the grantee, this is the same thing we've had every year in our, our pro application, this is particularly the one for the pro officer at the high schools, I understand.
How much is it?
I don't know, I haven't seen the grant yet, but this is the MOU between the board and commission, so I presume they're applying for twenty.
Thanks.
Right, sure.
I may address that real quick, and I was prepared.
Come on up, Nathan.
When Denise Haught sent me an email about that, I did request that she add all three positions, to try to get more money to help.
Say that again.
To add, because when Denise Haught emailed me about that last week, I, because you know, we already have one in Cape and Bridge, I requested that she add that position as well, to try to get funding to help subsidize our Cape and Bridge, and then we still have a vacant position that hasn't been filled at, for the middle school in Romney, so she, when that grant's prepared, it's actually going to be requested that it helps subsidize all three positions.
Okay.
So, again, this is just the MOU portion of that, it was delivered yesterday, and I believe they're going to be bringing the grant to the next meeting, I believe that I'm sure.
Yeah, it's due sometime in July.
Did you see, did you see anything in there that you-
Yeah, it, it, it's just the MOU for the position, Bob, it doesn't talk about the-
Have they changed it or not?
Financials.
It should not have been.
Is it the same MOU, Brian, other than the additional position?
I don't, I think so.
There's not anything in here about the-
I haven't read it word for word.
There's not anything in here about, about three, I don't think, in this, in this MOU.
I think it's just three standard.
Yeah, that's just a-
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing in there about three, three, but it's just as to how the, how the pro officer will conduct themselves and-
Oh, okay.
Who they're going to be responsible to, and-
Yeah, that ought to be a bold.
They're responsible to the principal.
Is that what it says?
Huh?
What it says?
Nah. Nah, it's no longer allowed to matter for Nathan.
See, now I got Bob joking around in here.
Commissioner.
Is that all you came over here for?
I have this application, American recovery plan application, you'll hear it now.
Do we have attorneys coming in today for Mr. Darnay Estate, Mr. Clerk?
I'm supposed to get an order from downstairs.
Sheriff?
Yeah.
You want to come up and look at this section one point oh two, make sure that's what you want to see there, section one point oh two, about halfway down.
What was it, Brian?
It's, uh, talks about the instructional activities, and the whole improvement and so forth.
The feasibility study for the, Mrs. Kidner, we didn't specify ARP or general fund.
Yeah, I made that assumption as they presented it as an ARP project.
That's where they, they-
Okay, I did-
They, they sent it up there.
They, they filled out a ARP application through there.
I'll make sure that-
Thank you.
Yeah, they sent it up there, I mean, I got a copy of it somewhere.
Probably should remind them, they'll have to fill out another one, since we changed it now.
Twenty thousand.
It won't be that same one that they-
Okay, so that puts us down to, this is the figure Eric sent, I didn't check that, that would put us down to, just as a running total for today, is that what, did you see that figure, ARP figure?
No, no, I didn't.
That, Eric did some running total math to say that this was after the Paul Romney pool, the sixty thousand for CBB, less, and then the development authority, Cape and Bridge, package plan deal, this is what we're down to.
Okay.
Allegedly, I have to do some math, but myself.
Bob, you still have a copy of that email that I gave you?
All right, there's also an additional fifty thousand sent.
Yeah, I got a copy from last, somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, Eric had sent some email back saying what she had, she's probably on her, she didn't have that, she prepared the name.
So, that's where the difference is, so we were here, we should be three hundred less?
You're there.
Okay, okay, and then the, the fifty thousand, we have nine thousand, approximately ten thousand in accrued interest, okay.
I'm not sure how that's accounted.
Yeah, we ought to be.
Sometimes you have to send it back.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'll, conservative on that.
Big, yeah, potentially big.
Okay.
But the, the fifty thousand that came in, I think that's like the tribal money?
Yeah. With a little looser restrictions, but-
I'm not clear, Eric, Eric will know all about it.
Yeah.
I must have given it to you, I can't find it, or you must have kept it.
Gentlemen, we want to table that, to look at that, have time to look at that a little closer, or?
I thought it was speed reader.
And is it, was there a time limit? I don't see any problem why we couldn't table that to the next meeting, so we can do the research we want to do there.
I think they wanted to go with their application, but nonetheless, it's, you know, we have the argument.
I, I move we table the MOU decision till next meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the MOU pro officer agreement be tabled to the next meeting, so we can research a few concerns, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, thank you, I've not seen that before, thank you.
Okay, we're back on schedule here, and we will ask West Virginia Fireman Association requesting funding, come forward, please. Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to come and submit the funding request. The ninety-
The 95th West Virginia State Fireman Association Convention will be hosted by Hampshire, Hardy, and Mineral Counties. Hardy and Mineral County has done the platinum sponsorship. The, we hosted the 85th and the 90th, which you guys were premier sponsors with as well. And we would like for you, we would like to request for you guys to be a platinum sponsor for the Association Convention. Hampshire County's pretty, it's pretty neat with Hampshire County with the Association because three of the last six presidents and the current seating president of the State Fireman's Association are, were presidents from Hampshire County. And we're hosting it in Kanane Valley at the resort. Yeah, all 404 or five departments in the state will have the opportunity to attend. I think it's a great event and being that we're one of the hosts, I would be in favor of the platinum sponsorship amount, $7,500.
General motion.
Gentlemen, wanna make a comment first? I'm gonna jump out in front of you.
No, go ahead and make it, no second.
I would move, I would make that a motion. We move to authorize $7,500 out of general fund.
I'll second that.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded that the Hampshire County Commission do the platinum sponsorship for the West Virginia State Firemen's Convention in the amount of $7,500. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Clerk, have I dubbed through all your maintenance items or you still have some there? You got a lot today.
Um, Commissioner Kidd had asked about the carnations they've ever worked with. The judiciary commissioner recommending essentially to continue his carries with this estate a little while longer. There's a couple of claimants claiming against the estate, they were denied by the representative of the estate. And so the judiciary commissioner is doing that, he wants to give them a little more time to provide itemized, itemizations of their expenses. Apparently they were presented in a more general way than the technicalities of law required. And the judiciary representative of the estate in this case wanted to take advantage of every opportunity he had. Nonetheless, Commissioner Brill felt that it would be sufficient if you allow him another 30 days to get his time to work through this.
Is that an order?
That's the order.
Okay.
Basically, this estate, from what I understand, gentlemen, doesn't have an executor, just has the administrator, which is an attorney.
Which is...
Yeah, yes, but to my point that he's pretty articulate, seems to have found some technicalities on the way they file, but I wish the lawmakers would make certain words like timely and voucher a little bit more clearly defined. But basically, the funeral, this individual didn't have very many heirs or people that partook in the end of his life, for lack of a better way of saying it. So I'm guessing the funeral home buried him, and this individual that did all the work is submitting a bill for all the things that he did.
The mayor may not stand up, and nonetheless, the judiciary commissioner would like to give him a chance to be...
Basically, all we're doing is extending the timeframe. So I move we honor the, and approve the order of the judiciary commissioner, Brill, in the state of Kenneth P. Darnay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and I won't repeat, but the, to the motion that the commissioner, that Commissioner Hart just recited. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Just for clarity sake, I accepted or followed the policy that the commission has approved for some time now. The governor approved, set up an order out approving June 19th as state holiday for state employees and all supplements. And the county commission has always approved all the holidays that the governor gives for state workers and that's part of what you guys approved for all time. So the county offices will be going to June 19th and 20th, thank you being due to, this is federal day, but not a state holiday, if it's not legislative. And then June 20th, of course, is West Virginia Day, which is a standing holiday. So I went ahead, again, I wanted to go far here and put that up, but I want to make that point clear that that's why you're seeing signs and awards and so on. That has been the commission's position, but I went ahead and wrote that. I have some HCSA exemption requests, two of which are recommended for denial, and then the others for approval of exemptions. One of these came to you last time and it wasn't clear, and you sent it back for additional. So that recommendation has come, so there's kind of the summary there of what's going on, and these are the ones to be denied, and the ones to be approved.
Recommended for approval, please.
I don't see this name. Tony, we're sure it'd be simpler for us to...
Thank you.
Who took Gigi's? Who's working on Gigi's box?
Kathy, Kathy Sehans.
Same office, there, 91 Center. Denial, denial, or the denials? You got the denials? Yeah. It says... Structure has been unoccupied, is that what DeWorten says? They quoted DeWorten there, that really would, did they quote that correctly?
Yeah, I think I've seen it somewhere. They went, I had these guys, I'm looking, these are actual, I mean...
They took some pictures.
There was only, there was two that were denied.
Yeah, this, I must've gave you the wrong pile, because this says... What was it? One of these?
Vanessa Carter, let me see this.
Robert Vanessa Carter.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It's denied.
Okay. Jeffrey Boyd. Denial.
Where's that at? He's over there.
Let's see.
I think it is, I think, I think, yeah. They went and looked at that one, that's the reason they denied it.
Okay.
Why she's gone there, we'll get refunded. Ted, you got a minute?
Did not camp at campground. That doesn't matter. It's whether they use it or not, it's... Yeah, so that's why I was wondering, why are they exempted? That doesn't matter.
Ms. McKee Hall, she's gone there, we'll get refunded, I don't know what they made with that.
That was one they were requesting.
We denied it.
They paid us, we denied it, because we still had one to drop.
But this one here, why she got that on there?
That was on there in the beginning, it should have been named.
Okay.
Right. What's your question, David?
It said did not, they don't camp at that campground, but you said that's not an excuse.
Right.
So this one should be, this one should be denied, shouldn't it? Okay, so... This one, it's a, it's a lease camp. So does the owner pay? The owner of that property, did their lease law, do they pay?
They need to notify, they need to notify that it's not, that it's vacant.
Or they will have to pay it.
Yeah.
But this person is not responsible. Do you know this landowner by any chance?
No, I don't know which one it is.
Okay. But we can have, we can have them look at this one further, if you want to. Yeah, yeah, I think we ought to, see when the lease was...
We see that one.
So not being in your camper isn't an excuse, but that they had their name taken off the lease, but...
Right.
So does the owner pay that one, or are they both exempt? There needs to be looked into when the lease was dropped and responsible for what, it's not noting that there.
Okay.
This is, this is one that they exempted or didn't exempt, did I?
It says exempted. David and I thought maybe they oughta go back and look and see when the lease was dropped and was it reported on that sheet that they're supposed to report on and so forth.
Just for the, this motion, Mr. President, I move that we authorize the exemption request on behalf of Michael and Susan Richardson, Mary Joseph Thompson, and Roger Roy Everett. Those will be the authorized exemptions.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the exemptions stated by Commissioner Tannen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. And then there was some two...
Two denials?
Two denials, and then one we're gonna ask to be looked at into a little further.
I'm ready to be approved, the two denials, and go ahead and have them look at the one, ticket number 4054.
Second, okay? It's also been moved and seconded, the two denial requests, requests for exemption be denial on ticket numbers, what?
582 and... 9995.
Along with...
4054.
4054 for further research. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed.
Robert Vanessa Carter's a deny. That one's here. Jeffrey Boyd.
Look at this one.
It's here.
Okay.
So it's just two, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. But then...
Maybe we'll check on the lease and see when that was, that one there was, he said that they didn't...
Is there a deny?
They had that as an exemption on the exemption list table, we was wondering...
Is this one at Millson's?
Was it reported or not reported?
This one was one that got missed in Millson's, it is not, it is to be exempted. She did not, I have a message from Sharon on that one.
Okay.
So does Mr. Millson pick the bill up there, Commissioner?
When it's empty, as long as it's reported empty, no.
They moved out the year before and somebody else was in it.
Okay.
And the new person was charged?
Yes.
Okay.
According to Sharon, yes.
Okay.
I wanna confirm that, because I do have a message, because I questioned her. Give me just a second if you don't mind. Because we were trying to go out and check on all of my teams.
So this one was, this one should have been exempt anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
According to what he's saying?
Our only question was, did it need to be re-certarized too? Was it reported empty or is it been re, if it's been re...
Here's a message, Don Mallis, last season owned farms 2021, Helms family took over that site in 2022, and this season, you'll have their information, since they leased the site beside me, Elsa.
Okay.
Mallis may have fallen in a weird timeframe between reporting to EMS and the actual leasing.
All right, that one needs to be exempted then.
Yes, that one's...
So we need to, we need to change our...
I'll move that ticket number 4054 be approved as exempted.
Second, okay. It's been moved and seconded that the ticket number 4054 be approved as presented and the request for exemption be granted. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Sorry about that, clerk.
Okay, 10:35, we have ARP grant applications. We have went over one of those already, I believe we have three more to address. Clerk, you have an order to, of how those came to us, or how we wanna...
No, they're just... It's an email, so I don't have to worry.
One I had was, I had one with EMS building, EMS buildings.
Okay, we will address the ARP grant application for, from HCSA on EMS building. We have, Ted, are you coming up to present that?
I presented it to Ms. Timber, did she not submit it to you?
Yes, yes, I did.
Oh, okay.
Well, you came up for, you coming up for further clarification?
Can I give you clarification?
I think it was actually submitted by Mr. Hart, but...
Uh, Mr. Hart's project manager over here.
What we're asking for, gentlemen, is $800,000. We have 500,000 change available. Our first round of estimates, as you know, went out at 1.7 and 2.1 million. We revised them, got some changes made, we got it down to the 1.2 plus million side. We think we can pull it in at 1.1 is our goal, and we're asking for $800,000, just so we can be in that 1.2 to 1.3 range. Anything not expensed or spent would come back out of the 800,000, so... Excavation work, I talked to Mr. Hart yesterday, is supposed to start in the next few, we hope in the next couple of weeks. Contractor, you all approved. This is to build a complete building and three bay, you know, to get all of our equipment inside. Right now, we've got, at the 91 Center, we've got equipment sitting outside. Gladly, try to answer any questions you may have on it.
Ted, I know the commission's had questions about the price, and it seems just hard to get to what I know we are... Ted, I know the commission's had questions about the price and it seems just hard to get to what I know we all felt is reasonable, but. Where, where does the, for my personal knowing and understanding of where does the, the one point two million or one point four million or whatever it takes to get this building done? I mean. And I'm not, and I'm not pointing this at, at you by any means, I just, I'm trying to understand. Because we built a, a Parks and Rec building and it's only been completed for probably, what, less than a year? We did that for under six hundred thousand and I'm, and again, I want this to happen for you guys, I really do, but I just, I'm trying to wrap my mind around why, why so much money?
I understand completely, when you jump into emergency services, you got to have sprinkler system and all that and the fire alarm system and everything and it has to meet certain fire marshal codes. I don't agree with it all the time, but that's kind of where we're running into. What we were looking at is a steel shell building, the truck bays would be just truck bays with insulation. The office area would be three offices and a data room and a kitchenette area for our staff because it will be housed twenty-four seven. I mean, so they'll need someplace to be able to do stuff like that. And yes, it come in, when our first bids, we were anticipating seven hundred to a million, come in at one point seven and two point one from the two contractors we put out. We went back, spoke with one contractor and tried to cut it down as much as we could and that's where the one point two comes in. And this would be, at this point, when the design build was put out by L and W or Kirk Wilson, I think it was L and W Engineering out of Petersburg, it was a design build program and it allowed them the flexibility to, this is what we want, you give us pricing and quotes of how to build it. And it was both of them bid steel buildings. Now, we're hoping to come back with another plan that may allow more local contractors to be able to bid on it, but the price of contractors and the time we went out for it, everybody was pretty busy and I think that's what inflated the prices. Now, it hopefully is slowing down and that's why we're hoping to get it down to, I'd love to see it be below a million dollars. I think it's a terrible price. And not a personal commissioner, but contracting prices are through the roof right now.
Yeah.
Anything you do.
Yeah, and, and you get what we call the busy contractor price where they don't need your work, but if they're going to take your work, it's going to be worth more than they would normally charge or why be even more busy? But, but that was my question, so you had already answered it, how did we arrive at the one point two? And it seems to me that, and I was glad I wasn't hard on Matt because what it seemed like was he just basically went to the contractors who are already charging a major premium and said, hey, this is the money we have, what, what kind of building can you build us for that? I mean, I feel like, and you know, Ted, you've built a ton of stuff. If we get somebody who's local, the, the price is almost guaranteed to be, but the thing is, can, can they get to it? And are they outfitted and are they insured to the degree in which we need?
It, and me and Matt have had this conversation, like I say, he's the project manager of it and lead, I, I give him my opinions considered constantly and I know you all do too, but. I told him we may not have to look at this turnkey deal because the turnkey, actually, everybody inflates it so much. He, as a building project manager, may have to start looking at, we're going to sub this out to you, you build the building, you do this, it's a lot more work.
Well, that's, that's.
And I think we can save a lot of money.
That's what Parks and Rec did.
Yeah.
Ted, I mean, and I, I was with them on that the whole way through and it was a pain.
It is.
It, it was a pain, but you know, I think they probably saved hundreds of thousands of dollars doing it that way.
Yeah, and, and that's what we're going to try to do, I mean, it's not a, throw it out there and let's spend, make sure we spend one point two million dollars, by no means. We need a building and we need to get people moved into their own place. And I am for whatever in favor, I don't care if it's a stick built building on, because Commissioner Hart and I looked at one in Morgan County and I forget what the price of it was, but it was considerably in the range and smaller building than what we're looking at, price range, it was just ridiculous. But when they get emergency services, you go build a fire station or build an EMS, they, they jump the price because they know you got to have it.
So you're looking for authorization on the eight hundred thousand additional just, just to make sure it's allocated and that would give you discretion to put it back out for bids and?
Yes, sir.
Just to be frank with you, Ted, what we, we don't have it in the ARP. Not that I'm not in favor of, of mixing the funding sources because I'm with both commissioners and I want it done, I want to do it right. But I think you're on to something, Panhandle pole buildings, the Menonite companies, but we just had a seventy-six by two hundred quoted for four hundred thousand. So what was the size of your?
Sixty by seventy.
So we're sixty by seventy for triple. You know, I, I agree with you, I mean, can, can we get our building and concrete up, get our mechanicals done?
That's kind of the goal that we're trying to look at, but we need to be able to know that if something comes along, we can pull the trigger and move. And actually, it'll still have to come back to you all and I think Matt has talked to Clark Stride a couple of times about procurement procedures since it's already been put out to bid once. As to what we'd have to do is what he told me last season on the phone.
What, what was that again, Ted?
About the, since we've already put it out to bid and the bids had been rejected, but it's been probably a year ago now or close, will be. He was talking about whether we had to go rebid it, but I'm sure we will, my, my opinion is, I'm sure we will, but Matt was kind of hoping that there would be some standards in procurement that would give us a little bit more opportunity to deal one-on-one.
Yeah, well, I think, given the year and the way the economy's been, you know, I, I would rebid it regardless.
Oh, yeah. The price of interest goes up, building materials come down generally.
Yeah.
And we bid it when price of building materials through the roof.
Gentlemen, what was the figure on the, the other relief funding? The, the five hundred thousand was sat aside two years ago, did you get that figure, Brian?
It's five hundred thousand.
It's five hundred on the money, but then we took out the excavating cost.
No, no, we're, the, the COVID money you're talking about?
Yep.
We pulled one fifty out of that to shore up the payroll. We plan on paying the excavation cost and reimbursement or spending the money out of the no fee account to cover that, one fifty.
Okay.
To keep us at our, what we started with.
So where are we at with the five hundred?
Ah, it's.
You got five hundred with, including that, one fifty is what's been done.
It would be three fifty with the one fifty in reimbursement coming back.
Yeah, we didn't want to transfer it out of the no fee account to keep it clean, it's just easier to, the forty thousand in contractor fees for excavation. We can pay directly out of no fee account and then that'll leave us a hundred and ten short to re, to pay other expenses for. So we're not trying to eat up any of our money there, we just, at that timeframe before and the new cycle of funding comes in.
Thoughts, Commissioner Hart?
Uh, well, I've, my thoughts is I, I move that we go ahead and allocate the eight hundred thousand and, and then at least have it allocated and hopefully we can keep it under, under what the, what we're test, what, what the, the one point two was. We got to have the building, in, in my opinion, we, we've, we've been around this thing for I don't know how many years and we, we just, we, we got to have the darn building and I'm just, we just got to go get it and get it done. I don't know how much I, I think we have over that left in our ARP funding, but that would be my motion.
I, I got a little bit of concern with that, Commissioner, by allocating money before we have a bid in place because we're basically telling the public and the bidders out there how much money we're willing to spend. That's, that's a little tough.
Well, we should have been in the executive session talking about it then, maybe.
I mean, we've, we've tried it hard enough, we, we know where the price is headed, but I, I, I am very hesitant to. And we haven't done that for other ARP projects, you know, I don't, on H C E S A to, to understand where I'm coming from, I, I want this building more than, than anything because I, I spent six years of my commission on their board. However, we haven't ARP funding our rules as commissioners, we, we haven't granted those type of requests as we turned down the development authority for a similar request. You know, based on there, there wasn't a, an amount and, and that was one of the reasons, I think, we go back to the minutes and look, you know, how do we do this when we don't know the cost or, or we at least don't know the estimate, which, yeah, I guess we do have a one point two million dollar estimate. So that's just a concern of mine, but I'll.
I, I agree, Commissioner, I mean, I think we ought to definitely, at the very least. First, let me, let me, I'll second the motion. I second the motion, but we, we need to put it out for bids and keep as close to best as you can, Ted.
I want to keep it below that, to be honest with you. That's my goal, mine and Matt's goal is to get it to a million or less. And it's going to be more work on both of us, but that's the way it is. I mean, when you want something, you got to go after it and work on it and any money, just because we're asking for the allocation doesn't mean we're going to run out and spend the full amount. We would spend our money first and then use what we needed from that. And my goal would be, hope and plan would be to see you all get money back from that allocation, but.
But all these, all these allocations have, it's, it's been, as far as I recall, the allocations were, we give them the allocation, but also if, if they don't spend it, it comes back to the commission.
Yeah.
I thought that's.
Just like the Cape Bridge revitalization project, the road.
Yeah, they can only use it for what, what the application states.
And, and some of these, some of these people haven't spent anything yet on their, on, on their projects. As far as, I think we have allocated money without, I mean, they had a figure here in their, in their application of eight hundred thousand and that's all we've ever got from anybody else is, is their, is, is their figure, they didn't have any bids. The only reason he has bids now is because we done that a couple of years ago, I mean, the only reason he has these figures. Anyway.
Okay, there's been a motion on the floor in regards to ARP application for the request of eight hundred thousand to H C E S A for the construction of a proposed EMS building. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed. Two to one.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Did you see this one? Who's the Cape Bridge thing? The library?
Yeah. Okay, we also have the library request and the broadband request. Aaron, would you like to go last since you're working the computer there or would you want to go ahead and go? I don't see the library here today.
They weren't going to be here, they just sent you out.
Okay. Well, I just, if they were here, I was giving them the chance to talk, but.
I got.
I got your digital copy.
I got a copy somewhere here.
Aaron, but I'll, if you got extras, I'll take that.
Thank you.
I got one. I think.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Good morning, gentlemen, this request is for ARPA Phase Two, the Hampshire County Broadband Extension Project, this request is for five hundred and ten thousand dollars. And this would build a seven and a half mile strand of backbone fiber from the current location of Hampshire County nine one one center west towards Romney, picking up both the courthouse and the Development Authority Park and then heading west across the river through the River Valley to Vanderlip across to Core Road, further extending our overall goal of connecting Moorfield to Wardensville for a redundant ring. Estimated timeline is nine months for engineering, right-of-way permitting, acquisition, material acquisitions about ten months and in construction, twelve months. Completing in the, in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five. The backbone, the actual construction cost is about three hundred and six thousand with the materials three hundred and seventy-six thousand, engineering permitting about twenty-six thousand eight hundred and five dollars. So along those lines, with the broadband project, very similar to the ARPA Phase One, in June of two thousand and twenty-two, our initial report showed that on average, when, for every dollar we spend, three dollars is spent by Hardy to hook everybody up as we're building the backbone. So, for example, Hardy County share, or Hampshire County share of ARPA Phase One was eighty-five thousand dollars, Hardy had spent two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And because they break everything by job order and so if an engineer's working on that, he builds to that job order. Current to date, we were, we were allocated one point two million dollars for ARPA Phase One and we have completed one million thirty-five thousand of that and that is thirty-five miles of fiber.
What did we, what did we allocate for you in the beginning, one point something?
One point two.
And how much of that?
Of which one million and thirty-five thousand has been expended.
You've already spent that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's, that's basically materials and that's broken down into three, four, five different invoices. Envoices broke down at seventy-four thousand, rough number, seventy-four thousand, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy thousand and then that's all fiber and then the electronics to go behind it was eighty, eighty-five thousand.
When did, okay.
And just for the, for the public knowledge, Aaron, that, that project, if you could just give us a quick summary of where, what that covered?
So. That'll cover, the ARPA Phase One covers from Cooper Mountain to, we've spoken down in different segments. So it'll build from grass, the end of Grass Eagle Look Road, Ford, to Ford Hill Road, up Ford Hill Road to the fairgrounds and builds a centralized remote at the Hampshire County Fairgrounds. And it also runs from Hampshire County nine one one center across to pick up the schools, down through Shanks, along Route Fifty, the old, what we call the old Comcast route to the fairgrounds and then from the fairgrounds, central location, heads east to the twenty-nine north split, twenty-nine, travels Slainsville Pike to Slainsville, picking up the Slainsville Elementary School and the fire department and the businesses along the way as well. And then from the twenty-nine fifty split east to the top of Cooper Mountain.
That was thirty-five miles, is that what that was originally?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And this, this proposed project, anyone could start?
Once.
Some timelines on that for us, please?
So the timelines for completion would be spring of two thousand and twenty-five, fall, and that's, most of the initial engineering overview is completed. Need to start, start on permitting and right-of-way acquisitions and that takes anywhere from six to nine months. And then material acquisitions while would be going on, you know, once it was. And then material acquisitions will be going on, you know, once it's approved. All be going on during that timeframe. And then ordering 176,000 dollars worth of materials would be along those lines going on at the same time. And then once the engineering permitting and right-of-way acquisitions completed, all the materials in and we begin construction, that's approximately 12 months out.
When did you turn those invoices in, Aaron?
Those have been invoiced as far back as 7/30 of '22, 1/16 of '23, 3/7 of '23, 6/1 of '23, and 2/1 of '23, I'm sorry.
Because in '22, I didn't see anything where anything was spent.
7/30 of '22, 85,425 dollars and 85 cents was submitted.
I see that on there, but I don't see, I don't see was, that was '23?
That was July 30th of 2022.
So obviously, Aaron, well, I'll just say as one commissioner, I think this is a good project. I think as a commission, myself and Commissioner Hart and Commissioner Cannon and Commissioner Parker beforehand, and it's even been recognized by the state, we've done things with broadband in our county that nobody thought we could do. I've been proud of that as a commissioner. I've been proud of Aaron and his work in that. But this is an A R P application, unfortunately, we're out of money. But as one commissioner, I'm going to suggest that we still fund the project. Six years ago, when we started in this, we had the intent, we had the intent that if we had to dip into some of the CDs to make these things happen, we would. And as one commissioner, since we are out of A R P funds, I'll make a motion that we plan to fund this project with the money that the commission can come up with to make it happen, whether that be from the general fund or using money set aside.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. I do like having a safety net, but seems when you have a plethora of taxpayer dollars, you get a lot of questions on how you're going to give it back or are you going to cut taxes? So this is a great answer to those tough conservative people that tend to be a lot of my constituents. So I would certainly agree with you, Commissioner Eglinger. Whether we break one of the CDs or try to fund it as the expenses come in, coming in from the general fund. So was that a motion?
Yes, sir. Is that a second?
It's a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the Hampshire County Commission work with the broadband committee to fund the requested project, although not the, through the American Recovery Plan money. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen. As a note of discussion, we will have to add in another addendum to our public-private partnership agreement because the current addendum for the, was set up for the A R P funds. So the next addendum to that public-private partnership agreement will have to be realigned to not include the A R P funds. Thank you.
Let me, let me add to you, Aaron, before you go there. I just, for the public's knowledge, Aaron has worked diligently with, with his committee, with the commissioners, and this, this would be the first local county tax dollars. Well, I can't, there's been small amounts here and there that we've invested, but, you know, he's done this through aggressive grant seeking and with our grant writer and so forth. So again, I don't have a problem with spending some local dollars here if we need to. Because again, we've done far and beyond what everybody said couldn't be done. So thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Our last application on A R P grant was a application from the library. And just give me a minute to, I looked at this on the digital copy on my email, but let me make sure I'm presenting this right since the library's not here.
The roof?
Correct, gentlemen. It was the roof project, and I believe the proposed amount was 15,000 dollars to fix the roof at the Cambridge Library.
But they hadn't put it out for bids yet?
That's my understanding.
I don't think so, David. Sure, Mr. David called me about this a couple, three weeks ago, and I told her to get ahold of Aaron. I didn't, I didn't talk to her about it extensively. I just told her to get, call Aaron and see if she could get.
Is the roof pretty bad? I haven't seen it.
And it's, you know, it's, they didn't help. I mean, that's just, just like committee on all this.
Sure. I think we ought to authorize them to put it out for bids first. We don't want everybody getting in that habit, blanking, just throwing amounts at us. For that building, that seems a little, well, it's, it's not over the top, but were they talking about metal or shingles?
I don't think, I don't think so.
That's definitely high for shingles.
Let me see that.
For metal, it doesn't say.
Oh, they did, they did, they did.
They're claiming three bids.
Whatever, gentlemen, think.
We want to, we have 15 left in A R P there. We should have.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move that we approve that for 15 for the Cambridge Library.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the amount of 15,000 dollars be granted for the A R P request for the Cambridge Library for roof repair slash replacement. And I'll note that there is, I had told previously, Aaron, that there wasn't any money left. There wasn't enough money for his request, but there is some change left for this. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Motion passed.
Yeah, we need to get the details on that 50,000 allocation, gentlemen, much. I do remember reading it, that the stipulations were a little different, or a little looser than A R P. But so just based on consensus and some of the sums we came up with through the email, I had 26,212 dollars remaining, remaining there. Then if you add the 50,000, 76,212. And then we need to figure out the ID, 300 dollars approximately in accrued interest, which if that's usable, would put us into the eighties.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you for that update there, that you kept up with that while we were working on it. All right, we are down to. Oh, Sheriff had one.
I apologize, apparently I didn't go through the proper channels.
I, I, you had one, Sheriff, sorry.
About that. Mine, it's a, it's a combined project between Sheriff's Office and EMS for routers in our vehicles. Sheriff's Office already has routers, but we have to, we're at the point where we have to upgrade those. And EMS does not have routers, the county EMS does not have routers in their vehicles. The way that this helps law enforcement is it allows us to access RMS system out in the field and better sharing of information out in the field, and allows deputies to be out, visible more by them having internet access in the field. And we are also looking at the possibility of putting M D Ts in our cars, which, mobile data terminals, which would allow them to access driver's license, registration information out in the field instead of having to run everything through dispatch, which will expedite what they're able to do out in the field and also take some of the burden off of the dispatchers in the 911 Center, having to run all of the information for them. As far as EMS, I'll try to explain this as best I can, and Ted may have to help me out. It'll allow them to feed information into the hospital on critical patients through the internet. And then once the patients get to the hospital, they will be able to, the hospital staff will already have a lot of the information needed, but helps the flow of communication better with them. And it also allows them to do their online reporting from their amulets.
You're correct, sir. The biggest thing is the hospitals can get the real type of data of the light pack monitoring, cardiac monitor, and see correctly. Right now, our providers are taking pictures and haven't submitted that line by themselves. This, the hospitals will have it, they'll be like, right here. And it's pretty much giving the necessity more because it's going a little more of our hand. It is, I like saying.
The equipment is 20,893 dollars and 36 cents, and approximately 6,500 dollars for installation is requested.
6,500 for one?
For all the installation.
For total, total installation?
Like I said, Sheriff's Office, we're already equipped with them. They just have to change the old ones out and put the new ones in. EMS is a little more extensive on that, so.
You're old, which is maybe yourself.
At least, yeah, probably over than, probably about eight, yes. So they've just, they've lifed out. So that's my measly request.
That's probably your lowest, that's a record.
Hey, I'm getting, I'm getting more concerned.
Getting lower. I knew we authorized the request as presented by the sheriff, 6,500 dollars.
No, no.
Be 20 something.
27,393 dollars.
Jesus.
See how inflation, look at that escalation there.
I'm ready to go.
You make your motion.
Yeah, I'm.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the commission grant the request presented by the sheriff in the amount of 27.
393.36.
393.36. There is, again, that much change left there, so we can grant that request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Thank you.
We're having my left one.
No, we're. Okay. We have covered all the normal agenda items. Under correspondence and requests, I had a phone call, and this was followed up by a letter to the clerk asking for this to be presented to the commission, and it's in regards to Millison's Walnut Grove Campground. And I'll let you commissioners read that letter if you have not read it already.
I'm ready.
Do you read your letter?
I'm ready. I'd knew we authorized the request of Mr. Millison for some grace, grace period, if you will.
Well, that's fine. I'll, I'll second it, and then we can do a little discussion.
I don't think it's something we ought to get into the habit of, but.
That's what I'm afraid of. I'll second the motion, and, but if we do that, then where are we going to set the limit? We're going to set the next time, two, two days, three days, whatever? And then when somebody else comes in and we say no, or, you know, we're setting the precedence here, which I don't think we should be setting. But that's, that's my opinion.
I did have a few phone calls on, on this, and, you know, they thought maybe we were being ridiculous, but being a little too strict for as close of a community as we are. You know, I guess I do sympathize with that a little bit. A lot of these ladies and gentlemen have been longstanding good citizens, and with the new amendments to the ordinance, I think, what's, is it three days, Commissioner? For grace period that we're allowing? It was about two days late.
I don't think so. We didn't have a grace period for this.
No, no, I'm saying the, the one that we're granting today.
Yeah, they was a couple of days late. But the thing is, you know, the girls in the treasurer's office, you know, they, they have rules. They follow the ordinance right to the T. And that's, that's how I feel about it. Go ahead.
Mr. Ted's, Ted, we, and I guess it's a question for the treasurer's office as well. When we changed the ordinance back in the early, well, late winter, early spring, the, the, all the proper notifications in the paper and the landowners were, received letter, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And there was no issue with that? According to this letter, there was no issue with that specifically for, for this landowner, correct? They're, they're not, their letter doesn't say they didn't get a notice or anything like that. They were simply.
I've never sold their land.
A day late, okay.
Okay. Was your recommendation correct, Commissioner Eglinger?
I, I did talk to Mr. Millison, and I will say that I wanted to grant this request. And I, I agreed with, with your statement at first, Commissioner Cannon. However, in doing government business and, and understanding the, the ladies at the desk, and we gave proper notification, I, I'm, I don't want to, I'll use that old saying, I don't want to open the can of worms. And I, I don't, I don't want to flip-flop on you there, Commissioner Cannon, but I did. And I'm the type of politician, if I flip-flop, I'll say it out loud, so. But I, I originally wanted to grant this request. They have worked with the county very closely and smoothly in previous EMS fee stuff, you know, the whole new ordinance thing over the past five years. However, my final decision on, on, on that is I'll agree with Commissioner Hart. We shouldn't open that can of worms.
Commissioner Hart, second the motion.
Yeah, I did second the motion. Ready to vote?
Yep, so let's go ahead and vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails.
And, and let me tell you guys, I, I feel like both of you. I need, that's, that was hard, that was hard for me to do, and I'm sure it was hard for Brown to do. But I feel it's the right thing to do. Just, just.
Why did we even bring it up, gentlemen? Why did we even bring it up, is what I'm, you know, if. Well, they, they. We just can it when it came, then bring it to this agenda.
He requested it. I, I mean, I, I spoke to Mr. Millison last Thursday, I think last Thursday. And he told me about the letter. And I, matter of fact, I told him how I felt.
Okay, any other correspondence and requests?
We have a CDB grant request for reimbursement for the Health Department building. This girl, 10,331 dollars and 28 cents.
What's, what's that for the?
The Health Department building.
Just need the president's signature?
Yes.
I move we authorize president sign reimbursement.
Need to see that.
Yes, sir. I'll second. I'm familiar there.
It's been moved and seconded for the. It's been moved and seconded for the withdrawal from the Community Block Grant for the Health Department ongoing project. All those in favors, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Motion passed. Looks like we're down to invoices. Before we go there, I'll see if we have any public comment as the public has slowly dwindled out, but we do have our delegate here today. Do you have any comments for us?
Only one left, right?
Yes, sir.
Hey, the only comment I'd say is I appreciate Commissioner Cannon, Commissioner Hott specifically working with commissioners over in general county trying to work on some of their issues, just the collective knowledge to share with each other. Appreciate it. Otherwise, thank you for your...
They seem to get a remedy for their...
I'm listening, I'm trying to listen to their commissioner meeting right now at the same time, with the timing and all. I don't think they've got fully resolved. I'll be going to some more meetings over there if this, and maybe I'll have an answer, but they've got tensions.
Yeah, they've, they've got, yeah, there's one tension. We're very, this commission is very fortunate to have all of our elected officials from, we get along, we work with all of them, and we all get along. It's just, and that's, that's the way it should be, really. It's just...
Well, again, I appreciate your help, each other.
Okay. Gentlemen, we're down to the invoices since our last meeting, and I'll give you some time to review there or ask questions to the clerk if they have any.
I do have a couple of budget revision, an in-house budget revision.
Mr. Clerk, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but this is a question, maybe you can answer it later, not this instant, but I seen on count 704, the regional jail was $80,674. Is that a duplicate or?
I'll bring your revision on that. That's what...
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
We have budget revision for that. That fund, that fund is in very good shape. Our jail bill has been much lower than we expected this year, so we've been going from that to cover some other areas.
Good.
We didn't have the same validity.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I would just offer a comment along with what Selby Molder said a minute ago, Commissioner Hott. Having been to the clerk's training last week, talking to a lot of clerks, Hampshire County is very blessed with the ability of our commission to work together. I always agree with work with electeds, and we have, I think, a unique situation in our county and our willingness to cooperate and get standard ground where needed. So everybody has that. A lot of people don't have that.
Gentlemen, if you're just down the invoices at all...
Thank you, Rick.
You're doing the sheriff's job right now. Actually, new components to it.
Oh, it's actually on the agenda, huh?
I'm sorry?
It's on the agenda.
Yes, on the agenda, and...
Yeah, they had a letter or something.
Count your blessings.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bob said that a lot, and, you know, not knowing.
I apologize. I have a bit of a cold today. My ears have been plugged up and I'm a real hard time here, so I apologize. It's my bad. I think I said the same thing in that actual line of things. I think they're a bit of a big help.
Oh, shoot, I guess I got lucky. Well, thank you, Rick. See ya.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you in the side of the bus.
Okay.
Gentlemen, I need to email you copies of the various awards because we're doing four appointments perfectly at the last meeting of the year, so on the front foot. You need attention. Sign.
Oh, it's over here on the left. I didn't see it.
Oh, yeah, she got you. All across the page.
Most of them are always on the right hand side there today, anyway.
Yeah.
Did you see the asphalt down there, the new asphalt we paid for for Parks and Rec? Either one of y'all see it yet in person?
Not in person. I saw the pictures they sent us.
Yeah, I did, too. No, I haven't seen it, David.
4H can't be running right now, so I'm sure it's being low used.
No, no, I hadn't seen it yet. I've seen pictures, but just didn't know if you gentlemen had seen how it was looking, how it was going.
Yeah, they're supposed to paint the lines here soon. The Parks and Rec was satisfied with it as far as...
$5,000 from jail bill to...
Okay. The, did you talk to the director over there? She was given raises in pay without authorization. You told her to halt, well, animal control officer, rather.
She works under the sheriff.
Yeah, I remember, but you remember the topic I was bringing up here, when, before budget time, she had already started giving out raises before we had authorized it?
I don't recall.
It's been, well, it's been three, well, it's been a couple of months, but...
No, I don't recall, I'm sorry. But I'm not, I have to look back. I'm sorry.
Did we, they was included in our budget? You say this before the budget?
We, we did authorize it, but she had already started.
Oh, okay. But she works for us, she does.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
The other lady, the other lady, the Eversoak lady works for the sheriff.
Yeah, you're correct.
I think we hashed it out. I believe, I was just curious.
She works for us.
Anyways, did you see this?
They haven't said anything about it.
I think it ended up working out anyway, but I, anyways. Mr. President, I move we authorize the invoices to be paid as presented.
Second.
Did you see?
Okay, the motion's been made to approve all invoices as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Motion passed.
Mr. President, I move we authorize the, and approve the budget revision number five as presented by the clerk.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the budget revision number five as presented by Clerk Stright be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed.
And I have another revision here from the circuit clerk's office for an in-house revision transferring $6,000 from postage to training. I move we approve that revision for the circuit clerk.
Did I see that?
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the budget revision proposed by the circuit clerk. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. Is this where signature for this or not? Need me to?
No, they just put, they put down who moved and who seconded, I think.
There's a spot there on the second page, that's why I asked. Okay.
Anything else, gentlemen, before the commission today?
That's all I have.
Move we adjourn.
Second. Been moved and seconded that the commission adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Motion...